Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting in the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, June 6, 2017. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone and state their name and address and sign our Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. Welcome again. Let's do a...start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance from Mr. Kerr, leading again.
(inaudible)
All right, we're going to start with our favorite part of every meeting, which is our proclamations. So let's turn it over to Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have 200 students tonight that we'd like to recognize. In order to do that efficiently, we're going to do it a little bit differently. If we could, please, we'll move three of us over to that side, then we'll have the introductions done, the students will come around, everyone will have the opportunity to congratulate all the students as they move through. So we could do that.
So this...we're trying this just to try to expedite so many people coming through in a small meeting.
We also do appreciate if parents could help us with this. So if your child has been introduced, if you could slip out then and give somebody else an opportunity from a different group to be able to see their child come through. If you only have one child being recognized tonight, that would be helpful also. The first group we would like to recognize this evening is the Penbrook Jazz Ensemble. And with us this evening, we have Pete New, the director.
Good evening, everybody. You're going to see tonight, this has been an incredible year for music, as it quite often is. This is the fourth, maybe fifth, year in a row that the National Association for Music Merchandisers, it's a tough thing to say, has recognized the North Penn community for -- and just one of only a handful across the country have recognized the North Penn community as one of the most outstanding for music education across the country. And that's due in large part to the many great things that are going on in our schools. In the last six weeks or so, literally thousands of our students have performed in concerts at every stage across the district. What you're going to see tonight is actually just a small sampling, about 200 or so of our best of the best from a variety of different schools, from elementary through high school. So we are thrilled to be here. I'm going to tell you a little about the wonderful group of students you see before you. There are two associations that do a lot of the overseeing of things that go on in music education, the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association and the National Association for Music Education. And these are the two organizing bodies that do a lot of the district, region, and state and national events that you're going to see many of our students have participated in. So before you tonight, this is the 7th, 8th, and 9th grade Penbrook Jazz Ensemble. These students auditioned for this group back in September and October of last year, have been performing all over the region, receive incredible ratings at every single festival they intended, but more importantly, they represented North Penn at both the State Music Educators Convention in Hershey and the National Convention in Atlantic City. And that doesn't happen very often, and it rarely happens where you have a group go to both in the same year. They're highly competitive, and they were selected from literally hundreds of other schools who applied from all over the region. So we couldn't be prouder of these students and the fine work that they've done. They finished their last performance literally just a few hours ago at Gwynnor. The last note's probably still ringing in the auditorium. They literally rocked the place today. So I'm going to read all the names, and these are just incredible students. Please hold your applause until the end as we go through. Beginning in our saxophone section, Emily Liu. Robbie Grenda. Adam Kim. Julian McNaul. James Cornell. In our trumpet section, Eric DeGodney. Michaela Nguyen. Sally Myers. Thomas Pyle. Cameron Wine. In our trombone section, Gabe Chang. Jacob Walker. Kyle Har. In our flute section, Nicole Albright. Crystal Chang. Sophia Yi. In our keyboard section, Alexis Pamford. Sofia Franco. Harrison Jaffe. Our bass player, Luke Engel. Our guitar player, Jeremy Davidson. And our percussion section, Bethany Mercer. Amy Blanchard. And Nala Ashanti.
I will say that we've done this a handful of times, and the music people are always the most organized. You notice that?
(laughter)
I think we have our parents in. The second group we would like to recognize this evening are members of the high school, the North Penn High School Women's Choir and Chamber Singers, and with us this evening we have the director, Matt Klink.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dietrich, Mr. Shapinski, and board members for recognizing us here tonight. We are celebrating the accomplishments this...for this year of two of our ensembles, the Women's Choir and the Chamber Singers. It's been a very successful year for all of our groups, but especially these two. A kind of, I think, of most notoriety and prominence, the Chamber Singers this year were the grand prize winners of the Moore FM 101.1 Christmas Choir competition, which was awesome. But that's a radio contest, that's kind of a popularity vote, whereas the accomplishments that we're celebrating tonight are much more substantial. So these two groups were both selected to perform at two very prestigious conferences, the first of which was the American Choral Directors Association of Pennsylvania State Conference, which was held in November at Susquehanna University. Both groups performed to rousing standing ovations. And then the second performances of both of these groups were at the NAFME Eastern Division Conference, which you just heard my colleague Pete New explain. I will tell you that that's going to go down as one of probably the greatest memories that I have in my own teaching career, and I wasn't even there. The reason being that that performance for us was on April the 6th, at which point my wife Jenny, who teaches at Pendale, was 38 weeks pregnant with twin boys. And we had made the decision that if she had not delivered by April 6th, that I would not be going to Atlantic City. The remarkable thing that I need to tell you about these students is that in most every circumstance, I would have just found a substitute conductor to go and direct the students. But they were so well-prepared and had worked so hard, I actually realized that the best solution was to just let them handle their business themselves. So both groups went and performed to huge crowds, standing ovations without a conductor, which is a tremendous accomplishment. I do want to recognize Noel Harrell, who's standing right there, who was sort of the de facto leader of the group. And for me, it was very surreal. I watched on a Facebook livestream from my classroom as they performed. And again, it's one of the proudest moments of my career because what are we trying to do? Create independent learners. And that's exactly what they showed tonight. So without any further ado, I'd like to introduce these young men and women to you. A number of them are not able to be here. It is a new member meeting for the Marching Knights tonight. It is rehearsal for Reflections for our seniors. But we are very proud to introduce these students. So we'll start with Megan Akias. Parth Aurora. Kayla Babbitt. Doug Bell is unable to attend. Jessica Bockel is unable to attend. Sarah Bauer is unable to attend. Timothy Boydin is unable to attend. Emily Boils is unable to attend. Andrew Bazelli. Sarah Bryant, who is not with us. Francis Burke, also not with us. Madeline Burke. Karina Calvaresi. Daniel Chapman, who's unable to attend. Alexa Claffey. Natalie Klausert, who is unable to attend. Jack Collins. Emily Coogan, who's unable to attend. Zoe Curran, who's unable to attend. Madison Eppers. Caleb Faya. Marlena Fortune. Leah Franco, who is unable to attend. Sydney Galison, who is unable to attend. Olivia Gray. Tyra Gwalthney, who's unable to attend. Kayla Harnett is unable to attend. Molly Hofstadter is unable to attend. Noel Harrell. Samantha Hummel, who's unable to attend. Madison Joyce, who is unable to attend. Sri Kharkata is unable to attend. Stephen Kandikian. Matthew Kreis is unable to attend. Olivia Krewash unable to attend. Alexis Lapriziosa unable to attend. Rachel Lapriziosa unable to attend. Shabon Macaria is unable to attend. Ryan Maloney, excuse me, is unable to attend. Madison Markell is unable to attend, and Liam McKee unable to attend. Emma Moyer. Aparna McCurgie is unable to attend. Lauren Mullman is unable to attend. Timothy Murphy. Julia Park unable to attend. Jay Patel. Ava Pendleberry, who's unable to attend. Katya Pennypacker. Kyle Preston. Shekaber Ramen is unable to attend. Nina Ramen is unable to attend. Catherine Rowe is unable to attend. Evan Rondinelli is unable to attend. Hannah Rothman. Caleb Spurling unable to attend. Lindsay Spritzler. Emma Stiersman. Samantha Steck. Henry Strobel. Alexis Thayer is unable to attend. Benjamin Vargis. Audrey Widener is unable to attend. Rachel Weiner.
And with us this evening, we have the director, David Pimentel.
Good evening again. My name is David Pimentel, and this is the P2 Select String Ensemble, representing Penbrook and Penfield Middle Schools, hence the name P2. And I am very proud to say that we had a magnificent year of performing. We were selected from at least 140 applicants to perform in the All Eastern Conference in an East Coast-level competition to perform in Atlantic City. And we also were selected at the top of the state for the PMA All-State Conference in Erie, Pennsylvania. The members of P2 here tonight are Nala Ashanti. Allison Blank. Vienn Chang. Anna Chen. Not with us tonight is Madison Cullen, not with us. Jigar Tadarwala. Luke Engel. Shreya Hari Krishnan. Julia Hauser. Elliot Hung. Peter Yablakoff. Anna Gia. Jamin Condisetti. Yumen Park. Anuya Prabodesai. Isaac Sin. Kendra Tiger. Ananya Venkatachalam. Martin Yi.
Give you a chance to let some other parents in, so you can catch up with your kids in
Yeah.
So I'm gonna be there tomorrow morning. You'll be there, somebody will turn on the...well, I don't know.
I do have...I forgot to...I think I'll be a phone. I have to talk with the kindergarteners. And yeah. Don't be honest, the kids will be in the...
Okay.
The next group we would like to recognize are members of the Pendale Jazz Ensemble. And with us this evening, we have the director, Bob Kennedy.
We are here in recognition of our invitation to the National Association for Music Education All Eastern Conference. The band performed in April. It was one of the highlights of their jazz season, and it was definitely one of the highlights of my career, getting to perform a tandem performance with the University of the Arts Z-Band. It was just a great time, it was a great achievement to be invited, and the kids just did a great job performing at it. One of the many performances we did this year. I give to you the Pendale Jazz Band, and here are the members. Kayla Vu, who is not here. Dara Patel. Maggie Zhong. Lauren Kimball. William Schlegel. An Sharma. Josh Weist. Chris Sejic. Jay Shudo. Amanda Greeney. Jace Aldifer. Sammy Hawks. Josh Koo, who is not here. City Date. Ian Kelly. Melvin Matthew. Nathan Yu. Hannah Kirchner. Eric Hamilton. Zachary Carf. Michael Johansson. Owen Brash. Hannah Sweeney. Nicholas Taylor. Danny Johnson. Julian Nguyen. Branda Vu, who is not here. Max Bachman, who is not here.
You're gonna get a chance to join your kids in the hallway, so we can bring some other parents in. And you have to know, the music people are most efficient at this, of all the proper
Josie, you've been practicing for the last couple of weeks, I guess, right?
Thank you.[1721.82][1721.82](laughter) I don't even get a chance to shake everybody's hands.
Next group we are pleased to recognize are members of the Gwinnett Square and Inglewood Chamber Strings. And with us this evening, we have the director, Krista Feliciani. Next group we are pleased to recognize are members of the Gwinnett Square and Inglewood Chamber Strings. And with us this evening, we have the director, Krista Feliciani.
Good evening, and thank you so much for this wonderful recognition. In front of you is the Gwinnett Square Inglewood Chamber Strings Ensemble from Gwinnett Square and Inglewood. This is a group of 22 students in grades four through six, and they were auditioned from the over 100 students that we have in our school orchestra. All members of Chamber Strings are also members of our orchestra and our advanced orchestra. They rehearse for one hour each week after school on Tuesdays, and for the past five years, they have consistently earned superior ratings at a variety of music adjudication festivals, and have been distinguished as the best overall orchestra at the Music in the Parks Adjudication Festival in 2014 and 2015. This was their first performance at PMEA, and I know with the legacy this group created, it's gonna be the first of many. So, in alphabetical order, we're recognizing tonight Jack Bachman. Amelia Braun. Sarah Kavanaugh. Ashley Cho. Riddy Date. Gigi Nash. Nora Eliff. Sarah Heath. Erin Kirchner. Hannah Kim. Juhan Kim. Simmer Klur. Athena Kwan. Aaron Lee. Jason Lee. Gianna Lennox. David Moon. Zoe Morosky. Nathania Prinsley. Ryan Ready. Pavitra Santal Marugan. Cassandra Tran. And we also have with us our wonderful company's Jill Swely from Gwinnett Square as well. Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Another round of applause for you guys. I can have an opportunity to join your kids, so bring another pair of parents in. Well done.
We are pleased this evening to recognize the North Penn High School Choral Instructor Music Department Chair, Matt Clank, to present to us our students from the high school that participated in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District, Region, and All-State Chorus, as well as the National Association of Music Education All Eastern and All-National Chorus. Mr. Clank.
Good evening again, everyone. We are here to acknowledge the accomplishments of these individual students. You've heard up till this point the accomplishments of our outstanding ensembles through the district. At the high school level, students are able to audition, though, as individuals to be in either district band, orchestra, or chorus. Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association divides the state into 12 districts, six regions, and students can advance through those levels all the way to all-state. In addition, students also now have the opportunity to audition for all eastern groups, which comprises the 11 eastern states of the northeastern states of the U.S. And fairly new in recent years are all-national ensembles, and we had two students chosen this year for all-national chorus. So, would like to recognize these students now. Again, a number of them are at marching nights or reflections tonight. But I'll start with Doug Bell, who was selected this year for district chorus. He is unable to attend. Tim Boydin, selected for district chorus, unable to attend. Jonathan Downs, selected for district chorus and unable to attend. Leah Franco, who was selected for district chorus, and Leah, because she had made states last year, also this year qualified for all easterns and all-national chorus. But she is unfortunately on vacation and unable to be here tonight. Stephen Kandikian, who was selected for district chorus. Katja Pennypacker, who was selected for district chorus. Katja also last year had been selected to Pennsylvania All-State, and as a result, was able to participate in all easterns and all-national chorus this year. Francis Burke, who was selected for district and region chorus this year, he is unable to attend. Madeline Burke, who was selected for district and region chorus. Sri Kharkata, who made district and region chorus, he is unable to be here. Alexis Lapriziosa, who made district and region chorus, she was also selected to all eastern chorus this year, but she is at reflections practice right now. Aparna Makurji, who was selected for district and region chorus and is unable to be here, she is at the high school for reflections practice. Henry Strobel, who was selected for district and region chorus. Noel Harrell, who was selected for district, region, and Pennsylvania All-State chorus. Emma Moyer, who was selected for district, region, and Pennsylvania All-State chorus. This is Emma's second time being selected to all-state, and as a result, she also went to all eastern chorus this year. Emma actually placed first overall in the state in her section. And Kyle Preston, who was selected to district, region, and all-state chorus this year. Congratulations.
We are pleased this evening to recognize members of the district, region, and all-state band. With us this evening, we have the North Penn High School Band Director, Mike Britcher.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dietrich, and members of the board. I know Mr. Clank had explained a little bit of how PMEA is structured and how it works. Our district that we participate in, District 11, is Montgomery and Bucks County. Lots of tremendous school systems, wonderful music programs. We were very fortunate this year to have 21 of our high school band students selected to participate in district band. To put it into perspective, district band is about 130 students selected by auditions, so almost one out of every six students in district band was part of the North Penn Band Program this year. It's really a tremendous accomplishment. 15 of these students moved on to the region level, and incredible nine of them made it all the way to the all-state band. There are school systems that go years in between putting a single student in the all-state group. For us to have almost double-digit all-state students this year, just a really great thing. So congratulate these students, and we'll start our first student. Not able to be with us this evening was Phi Adebakun. He made district band. Next, we have Jack Collins, made district band. Jake Halpern, made district band, unable to be with us this evening. Sri Kharkata is running around here somewhere, but I don't see him right now. I know he was here earlier, but we'll take his certificate for him. He made district band. And our last district band student was Haley Peterson. Moving on now to the students who made districts and regional band, we have Alexa Claffey. Lindsay Durkin. Sean Hayes. Julie Kratz. Kyle Preston. Sasha Sidik. And Hannah Stevens. Oh, sorry. It's Alexandra Sasha Sidik. Alexandra, yeah. And our all-state students. Not able to be with us this evening is Alexa LeBron Cruz. We had Jessica Liu. Oh, I'm sorry, Veronica. I skipped you. My fault. Veronica Laguna made all-state band this year. Alexa LeBron Cruz is not able to be with us this evening. Jessica Liu. Julia Monkovic. Timothy James Murphy. Nicholas New. Evan Rondanelli is not able to be with us this evening. Alexandra Ali Rothman. And Allison Yang. I'll go. I'll go. I'll go. I'm sure if that's okay, because I'm introducing them as well.
Mr. Britcher will also do the next presentations. He is presenting on behalf of Erica Milborn, North Penn High School's orchestra director, who could not be with us this evening. We would like to recognize members of the district, region, and all-state orchestra.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here on behalf of my colleague Erica Milborn, the orchestra director at the high school. Six of our students were selected to participate in district, region, or all-state orchestra. Two of the students were unable to be with us this evening. Joeladee Adebakun is not able to join us this evening. And Joa Kim is not able to join us this evening. But making district orchestra, we have Stephen Seymour with us this evening. And Allison Yang, making district orchestra. And two of our orchestra students not only made through districts and regionals, but made it all the way to the all-state orchestra. We had Courtney Sabanas. And Vinayak Shankar. It's always a source of great pride for the music program. North Penn is just renowned for our programs in music, and tonight's a perfect example of why. Before we move through with our agenda and take audience of citizens, I want the audience to know, the board did meet in executive session June 6th today, from roughly 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel negotiation and litigation. It is now time, we're gonna take some comments before we move on with our agenda for the Planning Commission enrollment study. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and address the audience.
Thank you. I thought I would let the board do whatever it does about their business and make the decisions which are going to affect the district for many years to come, and I I know that you know that I always have some type of input, and I thought a break from my input would be a positive a positive indication that I listen as well as I speak. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, Lansdale, and I want to speak to the board tonight about... I was noticing that most of these recognition and all this student achievement was focused in the arts and in music. And I want to bring to the board's attention that the constraints of Act One, the removal of all funds for the arts, the performing arts, are going to be eliminated because of the constraints of the growth of the national economy, which is not performing well at the state level, and these funds. There won't be any money, and I think what we need to do is prepare in this district, if those are removed, these are wonderful programs. But we need to make, have a long-term vision for the sustainability, so that when we have things coming from the legislature in Harrisburg, oh, well, we won't be able to have any spot assessments to make up deficits which we have, and our superintendent was mentioning, this is a very serious problem. And I don't know how this would all turn out, but I doubt if anybody in this district would vote for a referendum to cure some of the problems which we have going ahead. We have a labor negotiations coming up. I don't know how that's gonna work out. I know that a large number of people in the district, if they're Title I, I know they're losing their health insurance. There's gonna be many families don't have any health insurance. I mean, some people think this might be positive for business, some people think it's a negative. But I know one thing, if you lose your health coverage, it really doesn't turn out real well the first time you have to go to the hospital and you get bills from some faraway collection agency calling you daily about whatever's going on. So, good evening. I want to firstly thank Mr. Shipinski and Mr. Kerr for their devoted service and the time to the district and to the students who hopefully are equipped to do college-level academics and have personal persistence to complete their admission in four years. And I think the number of actually students that graduate from here, if we had a study, you would see only about 40% of those that actually leave here are able to finish that program which they've started in the four years. It's taking much It's taking much longer because when I get to be a junior, gee, my parents can't, wow, I can't get a plus loan anymore. I can't do this. There's many, many variables which are going to prevent students from achieving their full potential that they're not really aware of. They're prepared mentally and financially to do so. You know where only about 40% of those that graduate actually go to completion? You know, things happen. Accepted into Harvard and bounced out for social media stupidity. Wow, how do you think those parents felt? We need to make our students well-aware of the things that go on in the outside world are very much different, this encapsulated environment that everything is beautiful and then they're turned loose. And I've heard of a lot of things and it's hard to believe. My son just finished the Citadel and that was pretty difficult and my wife and I were always, boy, I hope this finishes. Well, it did finish and we are very grateful that he had the ability to finish. We all hope for the best. We plan, prepare, and envision those wonderful things that are truly possible. Even our president is tweeting more than he should. And, you know, our students, if they would just tweet a little bit less, stay off of Facebook, and do things like a responsible adult would be expected to do, they'll miss a lot of difficulties. And I want to make all those students that are socially, it's not a good idea and I think the school should make them well-aware. You might do things that you'll be very, very sorry for in the future. So, you know, our job is to help people progress academically, socially, and do the things that are going to enable them to be successful in their life, not one stupid thing. I tell you what, it's a really tough deal if you make a really bad decision. Elections are tampered with. Now, it's hard to believe. I said a couple of years ago, I was talking about the computers and gee, I hope we don't get hacked into. Well, they have malware and it's going all over the world and I can't help but thinking, boy, I wonder how long our health records and all the things that we store in these computers, oh, we got shut down. I can't believe it. What are we going to do? Well, you know, a lot of major corporations, a lot of governmental agencies were sitting there thinking the same thing. Gee, what do we do? How did this happen? We have everything. Well, I'll tell you what, the people that are looking to do bad things, they're way ahead of, we're reactive, not proactive, and we need to be. The cameras which Mr. O'Donnell is getting put in, that's probably a good start, but who can envision the bad things that can happen? Because the bad things always happen and then we're, oh, well, we need to get ready for the next time this may happen. So, we need to be prepared in all areas. When does the ransomware, the malware, and the hacking change the district? It's coming. And all the planning in the world will not bring back the problems that will be created. And there's many people around the world that are like, every day finding out, gee, my computer doesn't work anymore. With the election of our school board coming, I hope that the public knows who supports what. And it's just not a name displayed on a sign. And there's a great number, a great many number, and you know what? Some of the names that I saw displayed out for this previous, the previous...
Primary.
Yes, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. For the primary, I did see names on that board and I have never, ever seen any of those people speak before the board. I don't know who they are. To be on this board, you need to participate. You need to know what's going on. You need to be here all the time like you people do. You show interest and this is a hard job. If anybody out there in the district thinks this isn't a hard job, I'll tell you what, it's really difficult and it's unpaid, probably the only, this is the foundation of a great republic. And Act One will be a challenge. It's going to be a real challenge. I don't know what they're going to do. I don't want this district to have to say, well, that marvelous string ensemble, we're going to have to get rid of that. We're going to have to get rid of this, we're going to have to get rid of this. Who is going to put who on the scales when they start weighing out, well, you know, I don't know about these, you know, we might have to get rid of this. Can't you slim down a little bit? We don't want to do that. We want to have a long-range plan. Do you want a $2,000 door and a door lock and a handle? Or do you want to have the string ensemble? What do you want to have? The stuff that's really important. Buildings are great. And you know what? We got to get ready for this high school. What is it, 90 million, 130 million? I can't even imagine how anybody's going to put that into implementation. There's many retirees that are just getting by. We didn't get a raise. It's very, very challenging. So, I want to thank everybody on the district for all you do, but we always have to be mindful. We need a sustainable thing that's in place, that's going to be able to really do the important things, the academic things, the things that really matter to the district. Thank you very much.
All right, let's move forward with our presentation tonight. Dr. Holden.
Thank you. If you recall, in the fall, the board approved for the Montgomery County Planning Commission to conduct a long-range enrollment study of the district who aided us in multiple planning processes. We're pleased tonight to have Scott France and Dan Farina from the Montgomery County Planning Commission here to present their findings to the board. So, gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Scott and Dan will be speaking to you in a few moments as part of this presentation. So, as Dr. Holden said, we had worked, I did actually discuss with them last year about doing this and finally the calendar opened up for the right timing and we performed the study over the last several months. Just wanted to set out front, we do have a final report that is in the works that will reflect all the information you're seeing tonight by the end of the month. That is expected and it's just a more fleshed-out and text-heavy version with all the data points that you'll see tonight. As well, you have the, what we call the interim report, which has the final results, but also some annotated bullets to help explain what that data means. And in addition, we'll be showing you the PowerPoint, which also sums it up. So, lots of information in front of you. We're going to try to walk you through it concisely, but cover the major points so that you understand why we came to the conclusions and the figures that we did. And be happy to answer questions afterward. So, I'll begin, let me just state up front, this is our 12, North Penn is our 12th district in the county that we've done projections for now since about 2013 is when we started. And we've done a few updates or revisits to other districts, so I think it's our 16th study overall. So, tremendously beneficial to learn a lot about the county, take the knowledge we have with our regular county work and demographic work within the county to apply to this and help flesh out and understand what's going on. When we look at school districts, any school district really, there's a number of significant factors that play into or can influence how the enrollment will shape in the future. Those are listed here. Recent and future births is a big one, is that can control or constrain your future kindergarten classes just by the native population that is born here. Demographic change, people, different age groups, and we're certainly seeing some interesting effects from the population bubbles from both the baby boomers and the millennials now, how that impacts childbirth patterns and new students as well. Moves in and out of the district, your migration figures and where people are going in and out and how that's affecting school-aged children. And then new housing construction, that's the quickest way really to add new students. You build a new residential unit and all of a sudden there's someone living there and that wasn't there before. And then finally, what happens with other schooling choices such as private schools, charter and cyber charters, and homeschooling options is another thing we take a look at. And then in the end, we're going to explain how it goes into a cohort progression model and all these trends that have been happening are kind of boiled down within that model. And we make adjustments after that point to identify things that are happening outside those trends or may influence future enrollments. So, I'm going to go through part one, which is kind of some basic background statistics and demographic information in the school district. And as you're well-aware, of course, it's our largest district in Montgomery County actually and encompasses seven municipalities, three boroughs, and four townships. We start off with population trends and just in general, from 2000 to 2010, by the census, the North Penn District grew about 5.8%. And this was actually a slowing down of growth, rapid growth that had occurred in previous decades when you were gaining 20% in both the 80s and 90s. In the current decade, which we're still in the midst of, we're still seeing similar growth to what we had last decade, a little lower at 5.3%. And what we know from the population estimates at this point, we're basically on pace to meet those forecasts for 2020. So, you've entered this pattern and as mature, pretty well-built-out suburban municipalities, they're always finding new ways to either redevelop or do some infill projects and some of the trends happening in some of our boroughs with redevelopment and transit-oriented development as well may have an impact. When we look at the details of the age cohorts, an interesting thing is, overall population, sorry, doesn't always correlate to the school-age population or the public school enrollment for that matter. So, when we look at what's happening with that age cohort of 5 to 17 by the census, you can see that it declined over, from 2000 to 2010, almost 1,000 students. And that actually did correspond closely to what the district enrollment, which went down about 800 during that time period. So, there was a little bit going on besides that, but that, very similar. And you also see the preschool age, the future students at that time, 2010, were also down. So, that explains some of the decline that you had in the previous 10 years. But recently, as you know, you've grown the last three or four years and we look at the 25 to 34-year-olds, this is your age cohort that's most likely to have children, highest fertility rates, to get specific. And that went down as well, almost 1,000 students from 2000 to 2010. So, that also, when we look at the next slide, which is birth statistics, you can see how that has affected a decline in the birth rate. And here is that slide. You can see going back to 2000 in the blue bar graph, it's been a steady, with some mild fluctuations, but generally a steady decline over that 14-year period. And let me just state up front also, it's important to note that this is based on the school calendar year, so we're drawing a one-to-one relationship between births and kindergarten classes with these numbers. You can see, like I said, it's declined. This is not far off from the county-wide pattern, which was also declining for a number of years or through the decade. Until fairly recently, the last two years, the county-wide number has come back up, but it's still well below where it was. Like I said, we've done 12 other districts. This is pretty much a common scenario. Only a couple have really veered from this pattern. But what is interesting in North Penn is you haven't seen the rebound quite yet. The 2013-14 spiked a little bit, but still historically low, and then it went back down again the next year. Looking at the last four years as a whole, that average is well below previous averages and those averages have been dropping. Now, we have reason to believe that's not going to be the case going forward, but before I get to that, note that what those recent four years of lower birth activity haven't impacted your kindergarten class yet. It takes six years from the year that the births occur to when the kindergarten class is impacted. So, right now, with the current kindergarten, they were influenced by the 2010 birth year, 10 to 11, and next year's class will be influenced by 2011 and 2012, and that's where you're going to see smaller kindergarten classes as a result, just from the birth activity. But looking forward, and I think this is really important and plays into our model, we know that this, we look at the county-wide numbers from DVRPC, the Regional Planning Organization, who identify females aged 25 to 34, again, the highest fertility rate. They sunk down in 2005 from 2000. In 2010, it came back up, but was still below where it was in 2000. And likewise, the county-wide birth numbers were down as well. But they have gone up since then. 2015 is actual data that has gone up. And the forecasted trends show it continuing to rise up, peaking in around 2025 and then staying up for a few periods before coming a little bit back down. And this shows, or this is the pattern that we think is justification or reason to think that you're going to see birth numbers go up again and relatively soon. And quite honestly, logically thinking, it's the millennial generation. This is your pocket bubble right now. They are not just confined, they're not all moving to Center City, Philadelphia. Some, you know, the articles might make you think, but we have lots of them, especially in those that do come, just like generations before, many of them come back to get good schooling opportunities and the other amenities that our suburbs have to offer. So, if you look at the numbers, we, the last, let's see, from 2000 to 2010, the female age cohort dropped by 605. And when we did some projection work to look at 2020, we think it's going to go back up and you're going to see it up to around 6,900, up from 6,600 this year. That again plays into our justification for thinking that births are going to continue to go up. And you look at those younger cohorts as well, 15 to 19, 2024, those actually did rise during the previous decade. They're not always the same students that are going to be living at home at that, or when they're 25 to 34 in these communities, but in general, you see them, as they come out, others replace them and come in, reflecting typical demographic change. So, we look at the total enrollment picture and this line graph may be a little misleading at first. It's a narrow view into the range there, but it really shows the end of the decline that you were experiencing, which goes back much further than 2007. I'd say at least 2000, well, the year 2000, you're about 12,000 or 13,500. But you see where it bottomed out in 2012 and then has been going up the last three to four years, with the last year being a more significant spike than before. So, when you see that, the question is, is it going to continue going up? And we've seen that in a lot of districts we've looked at, especially in mature suburbs in the east. Or is it more of a cyclical pattern where it will come back down? And that's what we're going to answer tonight. And we start to get a clue into that a little bit when we look at it by grade levels. On this map or graph, you see the last 10 years, the blue line with the elementary school level. And you can make out, you can tell how the last three years that has increased after being fairly stable up and down for the previous part of the decade. You move down to the 7 to 9 junior or middle school and the 10 to 12 senior high. And more fluctuation there, the senior high has, rose up in the last year alone, but before that was kind of stable after declining. The middle school range really shows a more cyclical, you know, if you zoom in close enough, you see it go down and up and back down again. And with more narrower grades, only three grades in those schools, levels, it's not uncommon that you do see that kind of cyclical, cycle pattern. We look at the other school enrollment. We have the non-public schools and we have two data sources here. The first, and what turns out in often case, oftentimes is the case, is the most reliable comes from the census. And so, the American Community Survey, it is averaged out over five years for each time period, so what you lose from it is the change, you know, yearly change that you might want to see otherwise. But what we can see there from the broad picture is that in 2000, we're 3,600, that dropped to 3,279 for the 2006 to 2010 period. And then the 2011, 2015 period, it dropped again to 2,900. Granted, these are estimates, there is a margin of error to it, but I think the trend is clear and we've seen it county-wide and in many other districts. There's been a general drop in private school attendance since 2000. It wasn't just the economy, but I think the recession did kind of hasten it for that period. And in some cases, we're starting to see a little bit of rebound, a little return, but not all. And I think overall, a general decline is still what's happening. You can see the percentages as well show that decline, now down to 18.7% as being private according to the census. We also look at the bus data for the North Penn School District, which sometimes, the best part about that is it gives you annual figures. The catch with it, however, is you're only counting students who are using district bus transportation. So, there are other students out there that aren't accounted for in this and so you take it with a grain of salt. It's also the data, you know, we don't control the data over all this time period, so sometimes you get little anomalies. We kind of back down to the data that we're fairly comfortable with going back to 2011. It does show a decline toward the end of recession and then it actually shows a couple increases the last two years. Is that part of a changing trend, going back to private school? We don't have any evidence that that is the case, but it's something to keep an eye on to see if that continues or shows up through the census numbers as well. And then finally, homeschool and charter and cyber charter are also ones we track, the district tracks and we looked at those. And they're fairly small levels in relation to the other numbers we're talking about, but they've been pretty stable overall during the recent time period that we're studying. So, now I'm going to hand it to Dan. He's going to get into a lot of the housing detail and here's where we're able to use a lot of our county data to help understand what's happening with construction and future development.
All right. How you guys doing? My name is Dan Farina. I'm just going to jump right in. We're going to talk about housing ratios first. Real exciting. We get this data from, or we do this study by using 2010 100% census data, measuring the number of households and the number of children coming from households to get ratios on average, how many kids come from different types of housing, both new and existing. So, we do it on the county-wide level and then we're able to, after the fact, break it down by school district, which we did for North Penn. So, you can see for... So you can see for existing units, single-family detached at the county level, it's about one in two, point five five is the ratio, children per unit. Single-family attached is point four one, and multifamily is point one eight, so basically one in five. For new units, it's point nine three for single-family detached, which is nearly one to one, point two one for single-family attached, so roughly one in five. And then for multifamily, it's point zero six. So you don't usually get many students coming from new multifamily developments. So that's basically one in twenty units will have a child. Now for North, oh, sorry, didn't mean to do that. For North Penn District, the existing units track pretty closely to the county, so it's pretty similar, point five eight, point four one, and point one six for multifamily. Now, we do it for the new units too. Typically, though, we don't use these when we look at housing developments that are coming in the future to estimate how many students. And the reason for that is because there's usually too little data to give us a statistically significant number. So they're posted up here, but we, for purposes of the rest of the study, we did not use those as the factors to predict how many students will come based on potential housing developments, which I'll get to in a second. So this is just a breakdown of the impact of the existing multifamily developments. At the county, we have an exhaustive list of all multifamily developments of ten units or more. For the purpose of this study, because of the sheer number of developments, we limited North Penn to twenty or plus units. And from there, we determine the number of units, and then we take your address rosters and we figure out how many students are coming from the individual addresses that represent the multifamily. So for this, you can see clearly from two thousand and nine to two thousand and sixteen, over these school years, you can see that there's a steady increase in the number of students per unit coming from these developments. In two thousand and nine, you had seven hundred and seventy-seven students coming from a total of five thousand, three hundred and fifty units. The number of units didn't change, but by two thousand and sixteen, you had over eleven hundred. So there's, this is clearly like an aspect of increasing enrollment in your district, if, you know, that's going to be an aspect of it. And then for, we also break it down by newer units, which is something we didn't do for most districts, but we did for this one, because there's a significant amount of newer developments built after two thousand, enough where we think it's an interesting statistic. So from that, you can see milder growth, but growth nonetheless in the ratio of students per unit. Here is just a simple line graph that shows you the amount of housing construction each year for the last ten years. It also breaks it down by type. The biggest thing to call out here is that you can see that single-family detached, which, mind you, provides usually typically the most amount of students to a school district, has been declining in terms of its share of the amount of housing built in the school district. And that's countywide, it's a countywide trend. But conversely to that, you're seeing the lion's share being single-family attached or multifamily developments. In this graph, two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and sixteen had significant amounts of multifamily constructed in, when looking at, you know, the last five years. In two thousand and thirteen, that was the Ave Lansdale, which is a unique multifamily structure that really is geared towards people relocating and just kind of transitional housing to when they get final housing. And then in two thousand and sixteen, North Penn Commons represents the majority of that multifamily housing, which is an age-restricted development in Lansdale. So over the last five years, an average of a hundred and seventy-five units per year were built, that's supposed to say a hundred and seventy-five, if you exclude all of the age-restricted developments that were built. So we're just counting essentially the trend infill, as well as the larger-scale developments that got built all at once or in larger phases. This translates to an average of around forty-six additional school-age children per year, and that's our baseline for determining if any future development will go above or below that and affect the district. This is just a simple map showing where all that housing that we just talked about was constructed over the last five years. You can see that there's, you know, clusters around newer developments in Montgomery, in, I can see, in Talmenson. And there's also a significant amount of development beginning in Lansdale, and most of it multifamily or attached, but development nonetheless. And this is probably one of the most interesting aspects of our study in terms of housing, is we essentially try to figure out where all the existing, where all the existing construction projects and potential ones over the next five years, when they'll be delivered, and how many students are likely to come from them based on their housing type. So you can see that there's a number of larger developments that are in the pipeline, going to be built within the next five years. Most of them are actually already under construction, if not nearing completion or in their last phases. But what's interesting about this is that most of them are attached or multifamily developments. So you're not likely to see, you know, droves of students coming from these larger-scale developments. The smaller, there are a number of smaller developments between ten and thirty units that are single-family detached, so you will likely see one-to-one, you know, children provided to the district based on that. We also, at the bottom, show other future possibilities. So basically, we speak with a number of township officials throughout the district to give us kind of an inference on what will come beyond that five-year period, and how, and how many students would likely come from that. What we see is that in Hatfield, there's just pretty good potential for over two hundred-plus units, not necessarily specific to any one site, but there are a number of sites that have increased residential development pressure on them, and they're likely to be in play within the next five years. Newberry Phase Two is a smaller development of attached homes that's still being worked through, it's kind of stalled. The Martin property is still in its conceptual planning phase, and the Wallace Street Apartments' plan is still evolving for Lansdale. You can see on the right, too, that we estimate the number of public school children that you'll likely see, because there's also a ratio of the number of students that are provided by a district, by the development, how many of those students actually wind up in the public school system on average. And then from there, you can see which factors we use for each of those developments, for the reference. This is a geographic distribution map of all of the proposed developments that we just spoke about. All the ones in yellow are the potential, and all the ones in green are the ones that are likely to be delivered within the next five years. And what's great about this map is that you can see where those developments fit within these school catchments. So, you know, in terms of a planning document, this can be used to see where you're at over the next five years. This is also an evolving aspect of the study, is these developments, you know, will have different curveballs thrown at them, or possibly come online sooner, and that's, this is just for you guys to have a baseline template to understand where that, you know, which developments are in play. Lastly, I'm going to talk a little bit about housing sales. You can see that over, since two thousand and seven, which is roughly the beginning of the recession, you've seen a significant decline in the number of sales within the district. It was a lot more variable during the recession, and it's actually fairly evened out, and there's a slow but steady increase in the number of sales you're getting. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, the town, the district is not a place that people want to be. It's actually more important to pay attention to what people are occupying the homes after those who vacate them, you know, sell. And that's where our analysis gets more granular, and you can see, we do something pretty unique. We take the, our own personal sales rosters, which are derived from the county's Bureau of Assessment, and your address rosters, and we figure out, for those three school years, in this case, two thousand and twelve, fourteen, and sixteen, how many students left the district as a result of housing sales, and how many came into the district as a result. And you are seeing a net positive change each of those years. And it's kicked up significantly, this last year, almost double the rate from two thousand and fourteen to forty-six. So obviously, there's an increasing amount of students coming to your district through the, even a lesser amount of sales are still having a greater and greater impact each year. This, we call this the churning of households, you know, there's also an aspect, like Scott alluded to, of generational transfer of housing from one generation to the next. We're kind of seeing the beginnings of that, we think, right now. So it's likely to pick up, and you'll see greater students from housing sales. And lastly, the census also puts out data on geographic mobility, and what they determined for the two thousand and ten census, the last full, excuse me, the two thousand and fifteen ACS, the five-year estimates, were that one, there was a one-in-four chance of a home moving into this district containing a person of childbearing age twenty-five to thirty-four. So you're seeing a greater amount of people coming into the district, or people who are buying the district are most likely younger families. And here's just a simple geographic distribution of our sales. It looks a little hard to really discern what's going on here, other than you have a lot of sales. But you can see, this is interesting, you see where you have the greatest density of sales, and possibly where you might see the greatest amount of new students coming into certain elementary school catchments, which is really the value of this map. And you can also, too, it's fun for reference in terms of, you can see where there are also clusters of development and things like that in the township. So I'm going to hand it back over to Scott, who's going to get to the meat of the presentation, which is the actual enrollment projections.
I like, I like that section too, though. But yes, we will get to the results and what all this means right now. First, again, let me just touch on the method briefly. Again, this is the cohort progression model. In a nutshell, if you aren't familiar with it, it really, it takes the change of every class, every grade, as they progress from one year to the next, over a specified range, and then averages out those changes to form progression rates, or average progression rates, and then applies those rates to future classes. And so you can estimate what a class is going to do as it moves from one grade to the next beyond the current level. And that's essentially what this table shows you, as you track that one class moving forward, going by the progression rates that are averaged out on top. We used a five-year range. That can vary, we, each district is different. We look at the numbers and how they're affected, and try to see where there may have been a change in those trends, and where those rates started to veer away, and it made sense. I think five or six tends to be the usual choice, but it made sense for North Penn here. Yes?
Your statement at the bottom there?
That is, yes, that, delete that. Right. That was my, I caught that after I sent it in, so my apologies. The numbers, however, are actually North Penn. But these are the actual progression rates illuminated here from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen. The meaning of a rate beside, you know, just a big decimal number, if it's above one point zero, that means you're taking on students, the class is gaining in size. If it's below one point zero, you're losing students. As you can see from the averages, just a quick glance across the table, all but one of the actual number grade levels reflect an increase on average year to year. And that's not uncommon, it's very common of a healthy and strong district that obviously people want to be in. So that is the case here. The one, you do see the ten to eleven was the one year where you tend to have a drop in classes for whatever reason. We'll leave that to the tenth or eleventh-grade sociologists and guidance.
Well, actually, I can tell you, that is, frequently, you see the drop from ten to eleven, and then an increase from eleven to twelve, because since you progress in grade levels at the high school by how many credits you earn, you have to earn a certain number of credits to be considered eleventh grader, or a certain number to be considered twelfth grader. You will have some, a small set of students who are in tenth grade, may not earn enough credits to be considered an eleventh grader, but then catch up to their class, so they, in effect, are listed as a tenth grader twice and then jump to twelfth grade. So that's sometimes, that's what accounts for that anomaly.
A very legitimate reason, and thankfully, not people running out and dropping out all at the same time in tenth grade. So, and then the other different number here you see is the birth decay. So that's a special circumstance where, obviously, with kindergarten class, we don't have the preceding year to use as a judge, so we have to go all the way back to the birth to get a, you know, statistical estimate of what's happening over time. And you can see over the last five years, those ranges of actual birth decay relationships are not far off. They never, they always vary more significantly than other grade transitions, of course, but I think compared to some of the districts we look at, there's a consistency here that is comforting and letting us rely on that average number to help us predict the future. So that's how we use these, and we ended up, so we set up this projection model, let me just define a few terms. It's over a ten-year period. The first five years out to two thousand and twenty-one is what we call the primary period, and the second ten, five years, from six to ten years away, out two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six, is the secondary period. We differentiate that because the primary is frankly, you know, more reliable, for the obvious reason that the classes are closer to that period, and it's easier to predict nearer in. The trends that we're using are more likely to continue as they are in the near future, and they could veer beyond that. Plus, but what's actually more useful is the birth numbers are still informing our kindergarten classes for the next, in this case, four years, and beyond that, we have to estimate births, and that's where it becomes a little less certain. So we keep that in our mind as we look at the model results here. So we set up three versions of this model with three scenarios, based on possible futures. The first one, option one, really what I'd call baseline. This is, you can think of this as terms of, if everything stays the same as far as current trends, we make no adjustments, births would be at a fairly low level as they have been the last five years, and then our progression rates are also five years as determined here. So the numbers under option one are going to be very conservative, this is what happens with no other consideration. Option two, we put in a higher future birth estimate, where we make the assumption that births will start to increase, beginning with the upcoming year, the next data year, which would be two thousand and fifteen, actually, fifteen to sixteen, and that we've calculated using those twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds and the forecast to see what that might reach by two thousand and twenty-six, or by the two thousand and twenty-six kindergarten, by the two thousand and twenty birth year, and with a progressive scale of increasing births. And that's going to affect your secondary period a bit more, while it doesn't really affect mostly the primary period, since those births won't be in play at that time. And then the third option, and this is actually our recommended scenario, it goes with the higher future birth estimate, because that's an assumption that we think is more realistic and should be planned for. And then we also adjust for the housing situation, noting from what, as Dan explained, how the expected future development, near-future likely development is going to outpace, not by a huge margin, but by some, the trend level of development that you've already experienced. And that's, I think, going to happen in North Penn. It's happening countywide, we're seeing those numbers as we continue to recover from the recession, as it goes further from our rearview, and other factors are in play that hopefully will, you know, help out the construction industry. So we've built that in, in option three, and still using the five-year progression rates, but the higher births and the housing update. Here is a summary table to show you the differences and what those models predict. The baseline, option one, shows a decline over each of the two periods, with a slightly higher decline over the secondary period than in the first. As you know, as I mentioned upfront, you've been increasing the last three to four years. That's expected to cycle back down under option one. Under option two, really the primary period is almost identical, that fifth year varies a little bit, but with the higher anticipated birth activity, we think it's going to start to make gains, and actually, over the secondary period, you will gain a hundred and fifteen students, resulting in a net change of negative two over ten years, although the change will happen in between those ten years. And then option three, which is what we think is most likely to happen, most realistic and most, well, most important to plan for, still shows a decline over the next five years in total, minus eighty-one, slightly less with some of the housing influence happening. And then that secondary period has both housing influencing it, as well as the increased birth activity. A hundred and fifty more students are in that period, your net gain is sixty-nine students over ten years. So these aren't major figures. I didn't touch on, you know, all the other districts we've looked at. In the Lower East, we've seen gains of, you know, a thousand-plus expected, or in some places where a thousand have already occurred. We've seen mature suburbs in the east, like Abington and Cheltenham, growing three hundred, four hundred, five hundred students, or expected to grow. We've seen declines. In Perk Valley, we saw, we're expecting a decline of almost a thousand students over the next ten years. We don't have so much other growth happened, and the development's really slowed down. In North Penn, you're in between all of that. You still have redevelopment occurring, you still have some infill, but you also have a lot of mature suburbs. I think that generational transfers, I think that's been happening a little bit, and will continue to happen with the population bubbles. But the birth, because it's been really going, I think the different thing from other districts is it's been going so steadily down over, you know, a long period of time, that as that comes back up, that's going to keep what otherwise might be some natural decline occurring from some of the larger bubbles or class sizes that are already in the system, and cause a decline when they leave the system. So that's the nutshell. We also have it broken down, just point to the third column here, all the options are here, but in option three, which is again the one we recommend, I just want to show you by the annual change in that last column, and again, reinforce the point. Overall, district-wide, you see, expect a, the largest drop to occur just this upcoming year, so you'll know right away if we're hitting the mark on that aspect. And then from there, it's very mild, but still negative numbers until two thousand and twenty-one, where you get a couple years of increase, and mostly increasing through the secondary period under option three. When we break it down by the school levels, at the elementary level, here you see not much variation between the three options over the primary period. Again, those births are all the same for each option. In any case, we expect a loss of over three hundred students at the elementary level. And when you, if you look at the details of the actual class sizes, you see some bubbles, you see some pockets in the upper grade, elementary grades right now. When they leave, that has a domino effect, combined with a small kindergarten class is expected. Those four years of sub-birth activity are going to be affecting the next four years. So it's that combination that really leads to a fairly certain conclusion that elementary school will go down. Now, but over the long term, we think it will come back up, and even under, and under option three, the net change is a positive in growth over the next ten years. next 10 years with the secondary period gaining 354 students. So I think one of the themes coming out, and you'll see, start to see it in the other levels too, is this cyclical nature really is, typifies, I think, the North Penn district more than a lot. And that's good for planning sake. I think it's more, more reliable to use. Here we have the junior high numbers and you do see gains expected the next three years, four out of the next five really, and 267 students. Options one and two are identical because there is no birth effect, given the timing that takes a birth to get to middle school level in the next 10 years. But then the prime, in the secondary period, you see it come back down, four out of the five years again. And again, this looks like a cycle. Again, you look at some of those pockets and really when you only have three, three grades put together, as soon as one goes up, it has an effect one year and then two years later, it has another effect because it's leaving the system. So it's not uncommon to see this back and forth occur. In the senior high level, you are expecting declines over the next three years before then cycling back up for actually a net gain by 2022. And in the end, it goes back down towards the tail end of the 10-year period for a net decline of negative 30. But I guess this is what I would call fairly stable numbers, although yet the next three years, you're looking at consecutive declines before making those up afterward. And the last part of our study, and it's in the, the interim report, is what we call school, school profiles. North Penn has 13 elementary schools, three middle schools. This is the part where we try to give you some feedback and some, some insight on what's happening at the individual school level, is that's certainly an important facilities concern. It's not as easy or straightforward to do that, unfortunately, to set up models. There's three things kind of working against it. And one is, in North Penn's case, you have non-municipal boundaries affiliated with your elementary schools. There's a lot more schools than municipalities. And so you can't really use the birth activity to get a clear idea. You can still look at it and draw, you know, some generalizations, but it's not one-to-one. Redistricting wreaks havoc with trying to set up the models. We did set up, you know, mini models for each school to give us, to help flesh out and figure out, because especially being K through six, it's a lot of grades and a lot of sizes to deal with. So we did set up models and I think they're very helpful. But we also know that the redistricting component of that can, you know, artificially enhance those. And we talked to the district and got feedback on what those redistricting things were. And there were a lot from year to year. So we did our best to include them and I, I just want to, you know, give you confidence that we did address them to the best of our knowledge. But when you have that much activity going on, it can be difficult and it can skew the numbers as they are. So what we typically do is we, we compile all the data for each district. What Dan showed you with all the housing, we, aside from seeing a map with a whole bunch of dots, you can calculate how many dots are within each school boundary and that gives you specific housing data to look at. We look at the birth figures to see what they are with the municipalities that impact a building, but knowing that we don't know how many live, you know, between each school area. And then, very importantly, we look at the housing potential, what projects we have in the chart that Dan showed, where those occur, what is school catchment area those are influencing and how that plays out. But probably the most useful thing is looking for the near term, is looking at your past enrollments and seeing where those bubbles are and how that's going to shake out over the term. So what we end up having is what I kind of call an anecdotal forecast, because we look at all this data and come up with a number, but we tried not to pinpoint it because we, frankly, you know, we just don't know exactly what the model, you know, how correct it is. So we give a range of about 10 students and you can see the results here compiled for each building. We ranked them in terms of the net change. Only two elementary schools were predicted to increase over the next, this is just the next five years. To go out 10 years would be an even more ominous undertaking. So we limited it to five years in terms of the building forecast. You can see most are declining and that fits with the overall district loss, which you saw was over 300 expected under either scenario. So these all add up and I'll actually go a little bit over that. Montgomery and Inglewood are your largest declines, as well as Gwinnor. Various reasons and, and we do try to highlight what, what those are. In some cases, it's existing classes going out and some might be that you've had development before and now there's no development to take its place. It can be a number of things, but we also do set up the model to show how those are going through. And, you know, and, and the other thing that can interrupt this is if new redistricting occurs, you know, next year and that, so that could, we might see the numbers and know that's not what we expected, but that's because 20 other students were put from here to here. And that's just reality and, and what you're, what you need to do as good planners. So hopefully these are helpful though, and all the data associated with it, we hope goes into that effort and makes good use. And we'll continue to talk, talk to the district if we can hone those any further. The last thing I'll mention is with the middle schools likewise, middle schools are even more difficult, unfortunately. There's only three of them, which is a good thing, but they also have the boundaries that don't adhere to other boundaries, but they don't adhere to the elementary schools either. So we can't know exactly how many from each school are going where. We still look at that and it still gives a sense of where the, you know, the schools that aren't declining as much or are having gains, where they feed into. And we came up with basically the forecast you see here. Couple of other things, you know, you look at the past enrollment, you have three different situations, I think, with three different schools. Penbrook, which has kind of cycled up and down and remained fairly steady over all the last six, seven years. Pendale has declined by over 200 and part of that was due to redistricting. Penfield has gained about 50 in that period. So you have a gainer, steady, and one more dramatic decline. When we look at the housing situation, much of the proposed new construction is in the Pendale catchment area. Penfield has a couple of developments, but Penbrook has almost no impact from new construction on the, further on the east catchment area of the district. And then we look at the elementary school influence, the most decline in elementary schools feed into Penbrook, or the, the elementary schools that have the most decline feed into Penbrook, largely due to Montgomery and Gwinnor. Pendale is impacted most by the decline in Inglewood and Penfield actually has the schools that exhibit the least amount of decline. So in those terms, that gives a little, again, a little insight as to what may come. Our end assessment is that the combined middle school totals will grow over the next three years, then they'll stabilize and then decline during the secondary period. Penbrook is the least likely to grow without further redistricting. Pendale should grow again with new construction and currently reduced class size cycling through. And Penfield should also grow, but much less than Pendale. If we're looking at about net change of 240 or so next, next three years, I think about 200 of that might come for, what is it, Pendale and Penfield, maybe 40, with Penbrook being less, more stable. So that brings us to the conclusion. And just to sum up, our general trends would still show a decrease of about 300 students over the next 10 years, but we think that's going to be counteracted and, and turn into a net gain mainly from the birth and the, I point to the birth and the housing, but some of those other factors, certainly the multifamily, existing multifamily influence where you're gaining students in older apartments, that's contributing to so those higher progression rates in the mid-grade levels. So I don't discount that and we, and that's mentioned, actually, it's the third bullet point there. The number of students coming from older apartments has increased by over 50% since 2009. So we're counting on that still continuing to go up a bit in the near future. I mentioned the birth activity and additional students also resulting from an increase in housing sales. I think we're still a number of years before that doesn't become a positive or, or you might see a negative, which I've only seen that in one district so far of the 12 we've studied. You want to keep an eye on these factors and our full report kind of outlines, it gives you a little baseline to track each year of the birth rates, the residential development, sales activity and non-public school enrollment and students in multifamily housing. And of course, we are always happy to come back and do more, smaller updates to the study and, and keep the dialogue open with the district is a priority of ours as well. So at this point, I'm very happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions to the right first and then?
I'm just going to start with an easy question, but is this going to be posted online for the community to look at?
Yeah, we can post it online and they will also be producing hard copy final documents as well that we'll have available.
Any questions to the left?
The only concern I have is when we used to do the old Pennsylvania Economy League projections, they weren't always accurate. So I'm kind of, I'm not saying, I'm not being a critic here.
Sure.
But I'm just wondering how accurate is this? Because a lot of people read this and they'll take this gospel. So I think it has to be understood that they are what they are, the projections, because really, you don't have a crystal ball, you can't tell. And believe me, I wish they were accurate because then we could plan better, so.
Sure. If I say 100% this is going to happen, then I'd be working on Wall Street right now and they wouldn't see me. That said, you meant, I don't want to, you know, speak ill of any other studies. When we got into this, we were talking to some districts and how they, a lot of them were using that same consultant or, or similar ones that basically, you know, used the progression model. And a lot of it was just almost too formulaic for our taste. We not, well, we have some data that they don't have, you know, being at the county. And certainly we hope that we would know what's going on in the county a bit more than out of people who don't live here or work here. And so I think that, from our standpoint, that's what gives us an advantage in hopefully having more accurate results. We've been tracking what we've done and admittedly, it's, you know, since about 2013, but in some of our early districts, we have three or four years of, of results now.
Okay.
And we're, we're very pleased. It's coming in under what, you know, the recommended percentage changes are, which is like point, over three years, you're expected to be within 1.4%. Over five years, within 2.9%. And we've been well below those in almost all districts except one, which we knew why, you know, something happened that, that made it a little different.
So you're saying it's about 2%?
Over, over five years. And which, you know, in a large district, that can be quite a bit. I think we'll come out much closer and usually we're about half that in the districts we've done. But, you know, whether it's the, you know, 12,693 or something else, a lot of times, it's the trends that are really important. And knowing this thing about, you know, what's happening in your apartments or older buildings and how that, seeing when that changes, and if it's not this year or next year, you know, if it's five years from now, being able to detect some of these changes ahead of time or at least, you know, see the warning signs, that, that, that's when it's important. That's when you know that, you know, that's the time when you might get a very bad projection if you just plug in the numbers. So that, this is a continual process, even though it's 10 years, I always tell people, you know, the general recommendation, you know, even from us is, you know, every three years, it's worth doing a full study. Those who, you know, want to, and some we, we have on contractors that come back every year, you know, in a much smaller effort because we're just updating the new year's numbers, then that's, I think that's very useful. And even if, even if the numbers are coming in right, it's good to see where those changes occur and when and how.
Okay.
So I, I would sell our, our efforts as much as I can, obviously, but I'd also be real about it and say, no, we, you know, things can change. And I don't like projection reports that give you like three options that are based on, you know, the standard deviation and, or high, low, medium. And it's like a 500 student range, like, okay, well, if it's on the low one, you're going to say you were right. If it's on the high one, you'll say you're right. So we try to narrow it down to exactly what's causing the change that we recommend.
So just to clarify, you said, you went back to the data and that you had already provided and you're within 2%? Is that, okay.
Oh, yes.
Of what was estimated, or is that?
Yeah, I, I can't give you the results of all districts combined. Some of them have more, but I just, I look at them each individually as, as New Year's come in. And I've seen it below, and like I said, the recommended is, pardon me, it's either 1.4 or 1.9 for three years, the second years, or the five years, I think is 2.9. And like I said, all but one, we've been well below that, that threshold. Usually, three years out, in a district that's maybe 7,000, you know, we're within 100. The question is whether it's up or down, but that can, that depends on the district.
And the other question is for Mr. Shirok, with the impact of existing housing sales, can you, by looking at this, can you see that it trends to our transfer tax in the same manner?
No, because the, the real bang for the buck in the transfer taxes on commercial properties is very little in the scheme of things, transfer tax on the residential side. I think the growth that we've discussed in the Finance Committee for the transfer tax has been from some large commercial transactions over the past two years.
Thank you.
Scott, I'd like to say thank you and to Dan, thank you. It's a lot of effort to do this and I do appreciate you used the birth rate factors for the most, the age group that produces the most children, because if I remember under Mr. Schilling's comments about the Pennsylvania Economy League, they gave us three projections using birth rates and the top rate was removing the birth age factor and the birth rates. And my 70-year-old mother assured me she wasn't going to have any more children, so that was quite, quite useful to us. So I appreciate you focusing on that group because that is the group that has produced the most to us for, as a school district. So I appreciate that. And this is a lot of effort, a lot of data. I would like an opportunity to digest this more and maybe bring you back for further discussions, whether it's at the committee level or at the full board level. Would that be okay?
Yes, be happy.
Absolutely.
Maybe after we went through the full report, that would be a good time.
Right. And, and that'll give us some time to internally, to be able to digest this a little more, particularly, you know, even though as Scott said, the school by school is a little harder to do because it's, it's, it's a little trickier to try to make assumptions, but we, we would like some opportunity to, to be able to go through this, take a look at it school by school and try to get our heads around what are the implications over the next few years for each school.
Well, just looking at the raw data, it clearly bodes our favor that we may be able to have a little bit more breathing room in the future, at least at some places.
And then the next five years at any rate, yes.
For sure. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Very much. That was our topic for tonight. Our motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? All those there? Done.